Good morning and welcome to the March 30th meeting of Nassau County Planning Commission. Commissioner Derso, would you lead us in the pledge?
Mr. Katz, roll call please.
Your mic.
Your mic. Commissioner Calate? Calati, I'm sorry.
Present.
Commissioner Gold?
Present.
Commissioner Foreman?
Present.
Commissioner Ellaby?
Present.
Commissioner Derso?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Excused.
Commissioner, Vice Chair, First Vice Chair Greenfield?
Present.
Chairman Shapiro?
Present.
May I have a call?
I'll take a motion for the receipt of the March 2nd and March 9th transcripts.
Some will.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? I know you.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Just out of order, I know there are people interested in the case and we wanted to take care of this first. Under paragraph F, OSPEC disposition, OSPEC case 1 of 2023, which is property at Uniondale, Towne &amp; Hempstead, 1255 Hempstead Turnpike, Uniondale, New York. Most of you know it as the Colosseum property. As the board knows, and I think the public is aware, the public hearing was conducted and closed on March 2nd. From that, the close of that hearing, OSPEC had 30 days thereafter to make a recommendation to this commission. It is our understanding that OSPEC met this past Tuesday and tabled the recommendation. So there is no recommendation now. That 30 days then would expire for them to make a recommendation on April 1st. After April 1st theoretically, this commission could make its own recommendation without having OSPEC make a recommendation to it. OSPEC is not meeting again till April 19th. As part of our process, we generally give a little deference to OSPEC. And I would suggest to our commissioners, or recommend to the commissioners, that since OSPEC is meeting on April 19th, two things. One is that the commission adjourned this case until 10 o'clock a.m. on Thursday, April 20th. And second, because I will not be present, my co-counsel, Patrick Alligal, will be here for the commission, that in the event that OSPEC does not make a recommendation at that time, on the 19th, that you move forward because you're now past 50 days. And, you know, your time has come for this commission to make its recommendation to the legislature, good, bad, or indifferent.
Thank you, Counselor. I would like to make a motion that the Nassau County Planning Commission schedule a special meeting.
No, it's not a special meeting, it's adjourning to that.
Adjourning, adjourned meeting for the date of the 20th of April.
At 10 a.m.
At 10 a.m. with a 9:30 work session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, staff, please schedule it, put it on the public, on the website, and send a notice out. Anybody that's here for this case will see you on the 20th. Sorry that we couldn't make a decision today, we were prepared to move forward. Thank you. More of you aren't leaving? Okay, you're welcome to stay for the show.
The chair likes the crowd.
Yes, the vice chair likes the crowd too.
Mr. Katz, let's continue.
The first case on the agenda is an application for release of surety bond and cash escrow for NCPC file number 1983F-1, map of Marina Point at East Rockaway. The applicant has presented an application to release surety bond and cash escrow for the Marina Point subdivision of East Rockaway. The project consists of 2.72 acres and consists of 84 units and six buildings. The majority of the site is situated unincorporated at East Rockaway under the jurisdiction of Towne &amp; Hempstead. A small portion of the property lies within the village of East Rockaway. The amount of the surety bond to be released is $1,467,678.33. The amount of escrow to be released is $47,453.97. Final subdivision approval was granted by the Nassau County Planning Commission on February 16, 2017. Chief Subdivision Inspector for Nassau County DPW, John O'Dowerty, inspected all bonded public improvements and issued a report dated December 14, 2022. He determined that all bonded items are complete and deemed to be compliant with all applicable codes and standards. A visual inspection of current state of construction offers no reason at this time not to fully release any funds currently held against a surety bond and escrow deposit. He can't, he spoke on this at the pre-meeting via a telephone call. He can't be, he couldn't be here today to discuss this. Staff recommends approval to the county legislature to reduce the bond and escrow. Any amounts are stated above. We do have, I think, Vincent Pizzuli here?
Mr. Katz, before we go any further, let me just lay down the ground rules for today. First of all, speaker registrations are over on the left-hand side there, behind the glass. Anybody that wishes to speak, please sign up. You have three minutes, and we will be very strict with our time today because we have a long agenda. Counselors and applicants will have 10 minutes to plead their case, and then any speakers can talk for three minutes. So, Mr. Pizzuli, you're now up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Vincent Pizzuli with offices at 200 Robbins Lane in Jericho, representing the applicant, Beechwood Atlantic Avenue LLC. As Mr. Katz stated, Beechwood is requesting the full release of its performance bond and cash escrow, and we thank the staff for its review and recommendation. To reaffirm, all of the bonded site improvements have been constructed, inspected, and confirmed to be properly completed as set forth in the chief inspector's memo dated December 14, 2022. With me this morning are several representatives of Beechwood. If you have any questions, they're happy to entertain them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. First, I'd like to ask our deputy commissioner if he would make a statement from our chief inspector.
Will your memo? Deputy Commissioner of Public Works for Nassau County. We did speak to John O'Dowerty on the phone just a few moments ago. He has tested positive for COVID and is not allowed to be in the world for five days. He confirmed that he has inspected the property and everything is as he states in that memo. Bond is approved to be released.
Thank you.
Name what just explains to the public who's here can understand what's covered by the bond. What issues?
I don't have full information on that, but it's all the public improvements at the property. The sidewalks, the paving, everything.
Right, the streets, the paving, the curbs, the sidewalks. That's basically it? That's the extent of what the bond covers?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, go to the mic.
Go to the mic.
Okay. And the drainage, right. All right. There's people with the speaker registration forms, do you want to pass it up to staff?
And is there anybody here who wishes to speak in reference to this release of the surety bond? We better wait. Okay, Mr. Robert Crossan, please come up. Name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Crossan, C-R-O-S-S-A-N. I'm an owner of a unit at Marina Point. I'm here to oppose the release of their bond. I understand that an inspector did inspect the location recently. I'm sure he did the best job he could, but I actually have photographs just taken this morning of several paving stones that still create tripping hazards. I also wanted to know, does the bond also cover the walkway and the bulkhead?
The bulkhead is governed by DEC. That's an entity unto itself.
So you have nothing to do with the structural integrity of the bulkhead?
We, the bond doesn't cover that, and we have no jurisdiction over the bulkhead. That is the exclusive jurisdiction of the DEC.
And if the bulkhead is structurally not sound and could affect the public locations that are covered by this bond, is that of a concern to the commission?
No.
It's a concern, but we have no jurisdiction.
Have you ever requested from the sponsor that they provide evidence that the bulkhead is structurally sound?
It's not a topic that we engage in, but we're happy to ask Mr. Pizzuli to comment on that.
And hopefully provide evidence of such engineering inspections.
And any issue regarding that, I would refer you to DEC, please.
And again, just for the record, this commission does not take responsibility for anything that might cascade from the failure of the bulkhead.
No.
It's not part of--
Counselor, would you explain that?
Yeah, no, it's not covered by the-- The only aspects of those are the public improvements that are covered by the bond. That's the only thing that is before us at this point in time.
The paving stones that I've identified that need to be repaired, as they create a massive tripping hazard at the entrance area to building number five's lobby area, elevator lobby area, has not been repaired.
That's not covered by the bond.
So the sidewalks are not covered by the bond?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, no, not those sidewalks, the public sidewalk out front.
Yeah, the public sidewalk is what I'm referring to.
Do you have the picture?
Yes, I do.
Can you give it to staff, and we'll have Mr. O'Dowd look into it?
Sure. Who do I give this to?
Give it to the staff up front here, please. Oh, I thought you had copies. You could forward it, they'll give you an email, and we'll forward it to Mr. O'Dowd for his oversight.
Again, I'd be happy to meet with an inspector when they arrive, go through this and other items that I've identified around the location.
I can't speak to his schedule, and he's not available to the public, as explained because of the COVID.
Okay, great. So someone will contact me, and in terms of releasing the bond, will you hold off on releasing the bond until they make this final repair after it's been inspected?
Let's hear from Mr. Pizzuli first. Thank you for your comments, your time is up.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're not aware of the defect that this gentleman is referring to. If you have a picture of it, I would like to see it before I comment on it. He just has it on his phone.
You've got no correspondence from this gentleman in any type of writing about this? Mr. Pizzuli, maybe what you ought to do is take this gentleman outside and let him show you what he's got, and then you can comment on it?
Yeah. Be happy to.
Okay, and then we'll go back to it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next, Mr. Katz, let's move the agenda, we're running late, and then we'll put them back on after they go outside to discuss. Oh, it's on Marty's case, I'm sorry.
Next up, we have OSPEC 2 of 2023. This is an application from the Towne of Hempstead Department of Water for a permanent easement for a proposed water supply pump station located north of Charles Lindbergh Boulevard on the hamlet of Uniondale, Towne of Hempstead, in their Mitchell Field mixed-use district. They are looking for approximately 8,600 square feet to build this proposed water supply pump station. Nassau County is requesting permission to provide this permanent easement for the above referenced subject property to the Towne of Hempstead Department of Water, and DPW approves this request. Towne of Hempstead has indicated this is a rather important project they're looking to go ahead with. I will hand it off to Kevin Walsh from the County Attorney's Office. Also, can we have a motion to open the public comment period?
So moved.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Walsh from the Office of Real Estate Services, as Greg mentioned. This is a request from the Towne of Hempstead Water Department for a permanent easement to put in a water pump station to supply better water to the Rosewell Field area from the Uniondale Water District. I am joined by Towne of Hempstead Water Commissioner John Reinhardt and the Towns Engineer PJ Connell from D&amp;B Engineering, if you have any specific questions about the application.
Commissioners, anybody have any questions?
We, Kevin, we were told this was going to happen when we granted the easement previous for LIPA on the adjacent adjoining property, correct?
Well, we did the LIPA easement quite a while ago.
Right.
This is a new need. One thing I do want to add to this, just to make it clear for folks, this is land that the county owns in trust of the purposes of Nassau Community College, so it's really college land. The college board has already--
Good.
--also seen this application and consented to this use. Some of the, there were a couple of locations in that vicinity that worked, this worked best, there's an existing water main, correct me if I'm wrong, and also there's some access already for PSENG, and obviously the fact they'll be adjacent to the PSENG small substation obviously makes it a lot easier to connect some of the electric needs they're going to have as well. This is just an important need for this summer, even going to be proceeding with a permit soon, so.
Mr. Crossan, excuse me. Vince Pizzuli, attorney for Beechwood, is waiting for you in the rear of the room to review the photos with you before we go on the record back on the case. Excuse me. John works for us. Okay, he is needed in the room here. This is not an uncommon practice we have to move the agenda. We ask attorneys and their clients to, and the-- No, you don't have to be represented by, we ask to share information, so that the attorney knows how to respond. Okay, continue, Kevin, please.
I think that's pretty much it. Any other questions?
Okay.
Anybody else? Anybody have any questions? Anybody from the public wishes to be heard? Not seeing any, we can close the--
I make a motion for OSPEC 2-2023 to be approved.
To be closed--
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, and send it off to OSPEC.
John, we need you in the room here to be the timekeeper, okay? You're not here to be a referee, you're here to work for the staff as a timekeeper.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving to section D of the agenda, minor subdivision applications. First up, we have NCPC file 60 of 2022. This was previously adjourned on December 15 of last year and January 26 of this year.
Just for the record, I'm recused on this. Chair.
This is property at 1685 Meadowbrook Road, Hamlet of Merrick, Towne of Hempstead's residential B zoning district. As it stands, this is an application for a three-lot subdivision. I won't go into much detail from the last time we heard this, actually, rather, I think I'll just hand it over to Howard. Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Avertine. Name and address for the record.
Good morning. Appearing for the applicant, Howard Avertine, 2116 Merrick Avenue, Merrick. The Commissioners will recall that at the last time we were here, there was significant input both from the Commissioners as well as from the public regarding concerns. The applicant is presently coming up with a new development concept, which will likely propose two, rather than three, homes and parcels on this property with a different access configuration, which hopefully will address the issues regarding emergency access and similar issues. So, but that has not been fully developed yet, so I would request that the matter be adjourned at this time to June 15, if that is acceptable to the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, when do you want to adjourn this to?
If we could have June 15, that would be great.
Okay. We do have one speaker, Mr. Smith. Would you like to speak now, or do you want to wait until June 15, when we have the hearing?
You're not available June 15. You're welcome to put something on the record today.
Richard Smith, are you here? Here he is.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Richard C. Smith. I'm the current president of the Board of Trustees at the North Merrick Public Library, which is adjacent to this property that's under discussion. I understand it's being adjourned until, what, June 15, sir? Remember, this is like the third or fourth time this has been changed here, and the last time we had it, this individual said he would have a new plan for this particular meeting, okay? I'm hoping that by June 15, he has that plan. There's a lot of community opposition to this plan. I have been asked by a number of the citizens to pursue eminent domain. I know that's not in your venue here, but we will look into that. We've already consulted some legal advice on that particular issue, and so I will eagerly await his new plan, but I think you should put a stop to this at June 15. That's the last time we want to hear about this, one way or the other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion for adjournment to June 15, 2023.
Make a motion to adjourn to June 15, 2023. NCPC minus subdivision, file 60-2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next up, we have NCPC file 18 of 2023. This is an application for a two-lot subdivision at 14 Nassau Street on the Hamlet of Sayacid in the Towne of Oyster Bay's R16 zoning district. This is a 13,000 square foot area subject property situated between Queen Street and Nassau Street. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 65 feet of frontage on Queen Street and 65 feet of frontage on Nassau Street, into two equal parcels. Proposed Lot A will have 65 feet of frontage on Queen Street with a depth of 100 feet and be 6,500 square feet. Proposed Lot B will have 65 feet of frontage on Nassau Street with a depth of 100 feet and be a total of 6,500 square feet. Towne of Oyster Bay Department of Planning and Development has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision, and the application is considered as of right. Here today representing the applicants, we have attorney Michael Ackerman. Walter Gilio.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Walter Gilio, 34 Frank Avenue, Farmingdale, New York, with Nassau Builders. As the gentleman just said, we have a letter of zoning conformance from the Towne of Oyster Bay. The parcel currently is 13,000 square feet. We would propose making two 6,500 square foot parcels, which exceeds the minimum lot coverage in those areas. House that's currently there is in very much disrepair, and we would be raising that house and putting two new homes in, which will be zoning compliant.
You're not an attorney, sir?
No, no, I wish I were, because then I'd be making money today, but no.
So, you're the--
I'm with the owners, yes, I'm part of the group, Nassau Builders, correct?
You're a principal, that's what I want to--
I am not a principal, but I work for Nassau Builders in a subcontracting method. I'm going to build the houses with them.
That's, if there's questions, there's a lot of people signed up. Not for this case, I think. Okay, sorry.
Don't do that to me.
Okay. We got a big audience here today.
Yeah, well--
They don't, okay, never mind. Thank you for putting on the record your representation.
Certainly.
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Okay, is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard on NCPC file 18-2023? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve NCPC minor subdivision file 18-2023 with a negative declaration.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is NCPC file 19 of 2023. This is an application for a four-lot subdivision at 542 Tremont Place and 2328 Hudson Street, Hamlet of East Meadow, Towne of Hempstead's residential B zoning district. This is a 29,667 square foot area subject property situated on the southwest corner of Hudson Street and Tremont Place. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 100 feet of frontage on Hudson Street and 242 feet of frontage on Tremont Place, into four separate parcels. Proposed Lot A will have 100 feet of frontage on Hudson Street and a depth of 70 feet, and will be 7,000 square feet. Proposed Lot B will have 62 feet of frontage on Tremont Place, a depth of 100 feet, and be 6,200 square feet. Proposed Lot C will have 55 feet of frontage on Tremont Place and be a total of 8,102 square feet. And proposed Lot D will also have 55 feet of frontage on Tremont Place and be a total of 8,365 square feet. Towne of Hempstead Department of Buildings has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision, and the application is considered as of right. Here today representing the applicant, we have Howard Avertine.
Good morning again, Counselor.
Good morning. Appearing for the applicant, Howard Avertine, 2116 Merrick Avenue, Merrick. You heard Mr. Hessel's description of the application. The properties are as proposed, the proposed lots are fully zoning compliant, and they're, importantly, Tremont Place is a 50-foot wide right of way with a 30-foot wide paved area, assuring access for emergency vehicles. I know the commission is very concerned about those issues, and it's a typical residential street in that regard. The tax lots presently are slightly different configuration. There are two tax lots on the property, that would be tax lot 278 and 277. 277 is the corner parcel, which has dimensions of 140 feet along Tremont by 100 feet on Hudson. Tax Lot 278 has a width of 102.28 feet and a depth of roughly 154 feet. So in creating these lots, there is a slight movement of the existing lot line between 278 and 277, slightly to the north to accommodate the town lot width requirements, which we do, and there'll be four colonial-style dwellings proposed for the property, all, as I indicated, full zoning compliant, and certainly answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, anybody have questions? Commissioners, anybody have questions? Okay, we have number speakers, Paul Quarter. Please come up, name and address for the record, please.
First I want to say good morning. My name is Paul Quarter, I live at 2341 Hudson Street, adjacent to this property that they want to build. I just want to go over some history with this. About 30 years ago, me and my wife turned around and decided we wanted to buy a house. We found out we couldn't buy a house, too much money, so we moved to Queens and lived in an apartment building, struggled with traffic, neighbors too close, too much noise. Finally, we got enough money to get out of there. After four years of searching for a house to be nice to live in and grow a family, we found it right there on Hudson Street. Well, we moved in, the neighbors were all nice. The guy across the street who owned the lot there, Mr. John Hadduski, was a World War II vet and taught me a lot of things about appreciating the property and enjoying the property, being soul with the property, knowing that it's quiet, it's peaceful, no traffic, kids could grow up there really easy. His wife actually grew up on the property when she was a kid. She actually passed away, she was 95. John passed away too and he was a great service to our country. Now, if you look at the map up there, to the left of us, just three houses down, there's another street there, Carlton, is the same block. The thing is, is that they only have three houses on that block that face each other and they have all kinds of parking problems. They hate each other because they can't find a parking spot. If somebody's got a birthday, it's hell. If they got a graduation party, I even got problems parking. So, now, me and my wife moved in and we have, we have a family now. The kids actually enjoy playing in the street, which we don't, not to, but it's a very quiet street, we like to keep it that way. The houses that they're putting up over here, we already have two and a half houses on this side of the block, so for them to put that many houses there, there's going to be annihilation with parking. And God forbid somebody gets hurt playing in the street. My gripe is that I pay a lot of taxes to live in a nice quiet area, I don't want to deal with the parking lot, I don't want Queens across the street from me. I moved away from Queens. Mr. Hadduski would be turning in his grave right now if he saw that his property was turning into four lots, because he liked it nice and quiet. You know, we pay a lot of taxes, I know you guys, you know, two more houses are going to bring in the taxes, I heard him talk about it, but we already pay enough taxes, we just want peace and tranquility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, name and address for the record, please. Hi, good morning, my name is Linda Maco, I live at 2350 Hudson Street. I'm two houses across from the lot that they want to subdivide. I object to the subdivision, it's two lots, it should be two homes. Tremont is a dead-end street and Hudson is pretty much the same, there is no outlet. Hudson is a U, you go straight, there's the stump and you come around to another block. Unless you live on these streets, you would not know they exist. Building four homes will cause traffic and we have never had, that we have never had, and parking problems. It will ruin the aesthetics of our block and the serenity we enjoy. Majority of us have lived here for over 20 years plus. It will affect our quality of life, most of our homes are wide-lined capes, therefore we have larger property. The reason I bought my home on Hudson Street was due to the quiet tree-lined atmosphere. If I wanted to live on a street with homes on top of each other and the volume of traffic and not being able to park near my home, I would have stayed in Queens. This property was bought for $1.5 million and now whoever bought it, or the builder, they want to just maximize their profit without any regard for our way of life. Like Paul said, our neighbors are very close, we get along very like family there. Hudson Street behind us is Spino Park, which years ago, as you said, Mr. Hadduski told everybody, it was a lake. That property was, they came from the city, they came out to Long Island to go to their summer home and go to the lake. Eventually, that lake was filled in and now we have Spino Park behind us. There's a bird sanctuary in the corner of that lot that's, you know, now you're going to take down all these trees and it's going to affect, you know, the habitat of the wildlife. And we just want a quiet street, we want to stay the way it is. And so, I totally object to the subdivision of these lots. That's it.
Thank you. Teresa DeLoro.
No, 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 no.
I just want to add to the 57 seconds that she has.
No, sir, that isn't the way we do business here. One at a time, Speaker, you get your turn.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Teresa DeLoro, I also live on Hudson Street directly across from this Tremont dead-end that they're planning to build the homes on. At the end of this dead-end street, the other side of the fence is a park. There's soccer games, there's children playing, it's very loud as it is at the end of this block. And building four homes, which was normally just in the lot that they're proposing, it was two houses, now there'll be four houses. I think the noise volume will be greatly increased. I'm sure everyone complains about congestion, traffic, and noise, but this really is a valid thing for our neighborhood and as, as was brought out, there is another dead-end, just a few houses down, exact same dimensions, and the cars do spill out over onto Hudson Street anytime there's any type of event. And it is dangerous for the children when they're riding their bicycles, so I'm definitely opposed to building four houses on that lot so close together and not having two ends of access to leave the street. And I have two letters from neighbors that asked me to read, is that okay if I read the letters? Okay. One, they live next door to me, which is across from this dead-end. We're writing to oppose the subdivision of land, section 50, block, block, you know the numbers, from two parcels into four parcels. Our understanding is that the developer intends to build additional homes on these plots. As this dead-end, the additional property will greatly increase traffic on a small street. Additionally, being adjacent to the park, development will greatly increase the beauty and natural wellness of our area, especially considering the added infrastructure needed to support these homes in one of the oldest areas of our town. As a young family and many others on our block, we ask that you please deny this subdivision so we can raise our children in the quiet, safe community we moved into. And that is signed by Pam and Paul Roman. And the other one, I'll just try to paraphrase some of her points because it is long, she also lives on Hudson Street, her name is Lori Pesquiera. She opposes it. Her concerns are the traffic, the different cars navigating our streets also. When there's an event, I just wanted to point this out, in this park on the other side of the fence, a lot of people come through our neighborhood to access that park. They're not supposed to, but they, they find a way in, so that's a big traffic area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just explain to the people who are here in the public, so this is zoning compliant, it meets all the present zoning codes, it's a matter of right. So, these, this applicant is allowed to do what they want to do here. We've said to people in the past, you know, our hands get tied when we get an issue like this and it's up to you to go to the Town of Hempstead if you want to change the zoning and talk to them about it and have them change the zoning so that they can't subdivide into four, four plots from the two. So, I just wanted to make that for the record so you understand where our responsibility is. We look at it, there are no variances, there's no height variances, size variance, lot size, it's all compliant with the current zoning laws. At this point, I'll now call Dennis Scorsia. Good morning, name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, everybody, my name is Dennis Scorsia and I live at 527 Tremont, directly across the street from the proposed building plots that are being built. And my wife grew up here, her family's from here, and it was a, it's a beautiful setup. We built the house that's there and it's unique to the area, we love it, we really did a great, did a great job there. The police, the property across the street, John and Elizabeth, they were good friends of ours, God rest their souls, and even their grandson, he even helped out from time to time. It's, it's like a piece of heaven over there. I mean, I, like everyone has been saying, I don't have to reiterate a lot of things, it's like chaos on the other dead-end street, cars can't even go down the street as it is, down Hudson, where two cars can go with cars parked on the side. They got to pull over, let one go through and so forth. I can imagine how that's going to be even on our dead-end street. It's just like getting overpopulated like everything else around the world here. It is getting popular and I realize this change is rough, but the thing is, it's like a piece of heaven that we have over there and we like to keep it that way. Now, if they have to put houses across the street, then why do we have to change like you were mentioning about the zoning? Why can't they just stick with the rules? I mean, this is-
They are, sir. It's zoning compliant, they are sticking with the rules.
Well, I thought it's supposed to be a 60-foot front on the house.
They were zoning compliant. That's, that's what, we'll have counsel come up again and just verify it, but as far as we know, there were no variances required.
Well, staff- There was no zoning hearing.
Staff, we have a letter of zoning compliant, right? We have a letter from the Town of Hempstead that it's zoning compliant. We have to accept what the town gives us with respect to this and the attorney makes a representation on the record also. He couldn't get title insurance where he built the house. And if he didn't have this letter of zoning compliant, they couldn't insure the house if you had title insurance. So, like the chairman explained to you earlier and explained to the other good neighbors coming down here, we understand what you're saying, but it's not within our jurisdiction. The town has the jurisdiction on the zoning and they have told us in writing that it's zoning compliant.
Well, is there anybody that done a parking density study? I mean, are they allowed, everyone, they have done that?
It's not required. It's not required.
The parking rules and regulations are the Town of Hempstead, not under the purview of the Nassau County Planning Commission. I live in a village, incorporated village, where we allow no overnight parking. The fact that you're allowed parking overnight is a total different situation, which may present more of a problem with snow removal as well as street cleaning.
Well, like I said, I'm just saying, I, I really loved our area, it's a perfect spot. I hope everything works out.
Appreciate your time. Mr. Avertine, I have no more speakers, would you like to address the issues from the good
Certainly. Regarding the zoning compliance issue, just to clarify for the record, I believe the gentleman indicated that he thought that 60 feet was the required width. This is Residence B zoning district. 55 feet is the, is the minimum width required with 6,000 square feet of area and all of these lots exceed, the two southerly lots are over 8,000 square feet in area, so they well exceed the lot area requirement and comply fully with the width requirement as do the two northerly lots. Regarding parking, I'd like to also put on the record, each home will have a one-car internal attached garage and a double-width parking pad in front of the garage, so there'll be, each home will accommodate three vehicles off-street. There are no parking restrictions on, on that street, on Tremont Place or on Hudson, but it is anticipated that there'll be ample parking based upon the parking that will be provided. As far as trees are concerned, the applicant, the owner, will comply with all Town of Hempstead tree ordinance requirements. I'd also like to state that the applicant is a relatively new entity, Capstone Homes, but Frank Caponia is a principal. Frank Caponia has been in the home building business in Nassau County for well over 30 years. He has been a builder and he's built several hundred homes. He is one of the most professional and attentive builders that I know. I know in previous applications to this commission and in other forums, he worked, he works well with the community, he does not impose on them when he's building, he keeps, makes himself available to any residents if there are issues that come up during the construction process and wants to create homes that fit in. These homes will be very attractive, they will, I know folks may not want to acknowledge this, but they will indeed enhance property values in the area. They're going to be lovely homes, they're going to sell for what is comparable for new homes in the area and really have a positive effect at the, at the end of the day. And so, and so we believe that the application should be approved as submitted and I'm here, of course, to answer any additional questions the commission may have.
Thank you.
The only additional question I have, the neighbors are rightfully concerned with respect to the landscaping, the birds and things like that, the environment. I just want to make sure when you construct these four homes as of right, that you put in, commit for the record, substantial landscaping replacing, you can't replace every tree that's there. Is your owner here? Would you bring him to the mic and-
Frank, you want to step up?
Mr. Avertine, I'd like to also, Bill Nemo over here, DPW, inform you that the properties that are adjacent to the Stormwater Basin that has the bird sanctuary would be required to have a 230 NF review from Nassau County Department of Public Works.
Understood.
Just to make sure the drainage and there's no impact to the Stormwater Basin from the development.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Nemo, thank you for that point and I want the neighbors to understand, there's rules and regulations about runoff from the buildings and retention on property by Health Department as well as the county. So, where we have jurisdiction, we'll exercise that jurisdiction to look over the application.
Please give your name and address for the record, Mr. Caponia.
Frank Caponia, 18K Street, Jericho, New York, 11753.
I question, sir, with respect to the landscaping with the new homes from the adjacent homes, what are your plans?
Yeah, we are going to be landscaping the properties there after they're built.
And I just want you to also commit, landscaping isn't good enough unless there's irrigation to make sure that-
Right.
-the plants are watered and they-
Yeah, we do underground sprinklers there, yeah.
Okay, so you plan on doing both?
Yes, yes.
And, and not little sticks, substantial landscaping, I'm not-
Yes, yes, yes.
The landscaping maven is our commissioner who's absent today and I'm not the maven on landscaping, my wife will tell you that.
Okay, okay.
All right, but thank you for doing that. And also, one other thing, I understand the neighbors frustration they didn't have a chance to go to a zoning hearing to discuss it. During the construction process, please be respectful of neighbors and the neighborhood.
Of course.
And, and fence it properly, confine it, and any of the neighbors that come here, if you have any issues, the jurisdiction is the Town of Hempstead Building Department, call them up and, and they'll send an inspector down if there are any issues, but hopefully you've built before and you've dealt with neighbors and you'll continue to do a good job.
Yes.
Because your attorney has to come before us on other cases in the future, he'll make sure also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question for you. Who did you purchase the property from?
It's an estate.
Was it, was it the gentleman who lives there, estate?
What's it?
Was it, is the gentleman who was the owner there, was it his estate?
The gentleman, yeah, I guess it was his, yeah, I really don't know.
I can, I can give you the information.
Can you tell me that?
Surely. Just give me one moment, I'll pull out the copy.
Sir, we're running a public hearing with a sedentary law and if you can't shut out, maybe the police officers can explain that to you.
The, the transferor of both parcels was- Okay, the, the transferor of both parcels was Patricia McDonough, who served as the administrator of the estate of Elizabeth Horodzinski. That was, and I guess, and Elizabeth Horodzinski was the surviving spouse of John Horodzinski. I presume those are the folks that, that lived in at least one of the homes. They owned both of the properties.
Right.
But Capstone Homes acquired both of the properties from the estate.
Right. I just, my drift in my conversation was, they were so concerned about the property, doing the right thing, they sold it to this developer, knowing what was gonna happen. So, their problems started long before this gentleman bought it.
Well, as, as you know, typically, what you see is, at some point in time, when people own property and there is development prospects, they wish to obtain the best price-
I'm not, absolutely, but what I'm saying is, this problem started with the neighbors when that gentleman sold that property for one, or that estate sold that property for 1.5 million dollars. So, I mean, we have no jurisdiction over it.
Not, no, certainly not over that. And, and as I say, this applicant comes before this commission with totally clean hands and a very compliant application, and as I indicated, while there is skepticism by the folks in the audience, they're going to be lovely homes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, for the benefit of the neighbors, the Town of Hempstead Building Department, whether there's a problem today, tomorrow, or in the future, that's the jurisdiction, and, and also your town council person. I'm not sure who it is in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Okay, any other questions, commissioners? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion. On NCPC file- Which one are we at? Nineteen.
Nineteen of twenty twenty-three.
Nineteen of twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for minor subdivision nineteen dash twenty twenty-three with a negative declaration.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So carried.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Greg, just hang on a sec. I'm turning the meeting, meeting over to the vice chair. Unfortunately, I have to leave for personal issues.
Next case, sir.
Thank you. Uh, next up is NCPC file twenty of twenty twenty-three. It's an application for a two-lot subdivision at 2052 Pine Street, the hamlet of Baldwin, Town of Hempstead Residential B zoning district. It's a twelve thousand seven hundred and eight square foot area subject property situated on the west side of Pine Street. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has a hundred and thirteen feet of frontage on Pine, into two separate parcels. Proposed lot A will have fifty-six feet of frontage with a depth of a hundred and twenty-five feet, and be a total of six thousand four hundred and eleven square feet, and proposed lot B will have a frontage of fifty-seven point eight-five feet and a depth of a hundred and twenty-five feet, and be a total of six thousand two hundred and ninety-six square feet. Town of Hempstead Department of Buildings has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision, and the application is considered as of right. Here today representing the applicants, we have Mike Gregory of Permits R Us.
Good morning, commissioners. Mike Gregory of Permits R Us LLC. I'm also the principal of, myself, of Home Builders of Long Island. I'm representing myself. Here proposing to-
Don't ask me what, you know, someone represents themselves, I won't put that on the record.
Okay, I apologize.
No, no, don't apologize. Just kidding, sir.
I'm here, I know. Uh, here proposing two single-family dwellings. As Mr. Hossel had said, this is a zoning compliant application. The area of the land is twelve thousand seven hundred square feet. We are subdividing, proposing to subdivide the parcel into two parcels that are in excess of six thousand square feet. We are not seeking any variances from the Town of Hempstead. We already received a letter from the Town of Hempstead. This is zoning compliant. In addition, permits have already been reviewed by the, I submitted the application to the Town of Hempstead. The application was approved, but the permits will not be released by the Town of Hempstead until the Nassau County Planning Commission acts on this application. So, I open the board to any questions you may have.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? And we have two people in the public sign up to speak to this.
Thank you.
Okay, Thomas Delaney.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Thomas Delaney. My family and I have resided at 2063 Pine Street for twenty-eight and a half years. My home is situated diagonally across from 2052 Pine Street, the property in question. While I agree that 2052 Pine Street needs to be demolished, I highly reject that two smaller homes be built where one stands today. You may refer to this proposal as a minor subdivision, but to my block, this action will negatively impact an already congested, overpopulated area in a major fashion. The developer in question, Home Builders of Long Island LLC, and the Town of Hempstead representatives, who I thought would be present today, will, who made the decision to approve this action, are only benefiting themselves financially with total disregard to the decline or negative impact to my community. Ethically, a developer should provide a benefit, a positive benefit inherent, and wherever they apply their vision, excuse me. How can the Town of Hempstead have faith in a developer who has zero, zero available information to the public? There is nothing available online, nothing about the company, their practices, customer reviews. This action, if approved, sets a precedence for other non-Baldwin-based developers to buy a property in Baldwin or similar middle-class towns, split it into smaller parcels for their own monetary gain, with total disregard to the neighborhood they negatively impact. With this, I hereby recommend that the Town of Hempstead, Nassau County officials, and the greater, retract any favorable decision for this minor subdivision to maintain a positive living environment for those in the neighborhood already. I would like to thank you for your time, and considering my stance, I would also ask for you to recommend my recourse with the Town of Hempstead, since I thought they would be here today.
I don't know why you thought the town would be here. They're not a party to this action. They never appear before us except when it concerns their own property. They don't represent homeowners in the neighborhood. So, I'm sorry if someone misled you in that way. John, do we have a letter from the Town of Hempstead with respect to the jurisdiction? Just checking the file. Mr. Gregory, could, could you yield the- Could you yield the mic to, Mr. Gregory, I have two questions for you. Okay, read into the record and the data. Okay, John's looking it up, the letter of, for the town.
I'll read the letter from the Nassau County, excuse me, from the Town of Hempstead Department of Buildings, dated January sixth, twenty twenty-three, addressed to the Nassau County Planning Commission, section fifty-four, block fourteen, lot one twenty-four. That is the subject premises. Property situated on the west side of Pine Street, fifty-eight point six feet north of Harvard Avenue, Baldwin, New York. Subject is property subdivision. To whom it may concern, I have reviewed the survey prepared by Joseph M. Petito-Lance-Vane, and I find that the property subdivision is in compliance with the requirements of the Town of Hempstead Building Zone Ordinance. Signed, Louis Carnaval, RA, Chief Building Plan Examiner.
Okay, next, sir, Mike. Do you have a home improvement license with the county in Nassau?
Yes, I do.
You're on file in current?
Yes.
And you have insurance that you filed with?
Hundred percent, yes. But not under Home Builders of Long Island. Home Builders, I, for each property I purchase, I form a new LLC for liability purposes.
It's not uncommon, you're not alone in doing that.
I am a licensed contractor with Nassau County. I do have a license number, and I do, I'm licensed insured, workman's comp, liability, and disability.
And you can't get a building permit from the Town of Hempstead without that?
Well, that's what I want the good neighbor to understand, that you've built before in the area.
Yes, I built one on Maple Street just last year, a few blocks over, that was, went for a variance to the Town of Hempstead, came in front of this commission, and it was on Maple Street, and we developed the house, and I sold it. I would like to add, this application, not this application, this house, I got some history from one of the neighbors, was a problem house. I actually had to pay the squatters that lived in the house to leave. There were three, three squatters in the house. I had to pay them to leave. It's called Cash for Keys. I'm sure you're familiar with that. I had to have my attorney draw up an agreement, met them in front of the house, and they left, and I secured the dwelling, because an eviction would have taken a long time, and they expressed that they wanted to leave and move to Florida. So, we came up with an agreement, and they left. The house is an absolute-
I hope you didn't pay more than two first-class tickets to Florida.
It's a lot more than that. Believe me, a lot more. If you want to know, I'll-
No, 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 it's not important for the record.
Ten thousand each, thirty thousand dollars to get them to leave, and they left.
It's not important for the record. We gotta get going.
But-
Okay, we gotta move it.
They left, but I would like to add to the board that I did take into account the neighbors. There are trees on the property that are humongous, and one of the neighbors said they're over a hundred years old. I preserved all those trees, even though the landscape architect recommended to remove those trees.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
I did not remove those trees. Thank you.
Okay, Kristin Scanlon, and the hour's getting late. We're gonna lose the quorum. Please don't repeat what someone else says, and please don't force me to speak.
Hi, my name is Kristin Scanlon. I live at forty-two Pine Street, directly across from the property in question. I echo my neighbors' concerns about congestion, more cars on the street. I also am concerned about the developer himself. I see you guys have some kind of relationship, but the part that we can't look up anything to do with his business concerns me. How do we know that this construction is gonna get done in a timely manner, and our lives are gonna not be disrupted for months and months and time on end? So, that's all my concerns for today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And any other questions from members of the commission? If not, we'll entertain a motion at this time. That's what he said, yeah.
You need, sorry, home improvement, I do home improvement, but not to construct, but-
And the other recourse is the Town of Hempstead Building Department, to call them. They're the enforcement on with respect to that, and Mr. Gregory appears before us regularly and has to go to the town for permission regularly. So, if he doesn't do the right thing by the neighbors, we'll hear about it. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve NCPC minor subdivision twenty twenty twenty-three with a negative declaration.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carried. Next case. Any names? No. Next case.
Uh, next up, we have NCPC file twenty-one of twenty twenty-three. It's an application for a two-lot subdivision at twenty-seven eighty Woods Avenue, hamlet of East Meadow, Town of Hempstead, in their residential A zoning district. Uh, this is a fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty square foot area subject property situated on the south side of Woods Avenue. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has a hundred and four feet of frontage on Woods Avenue, into two separate parcels. Proposed lot A will have fifty-two feet of frontage, a depth of a hundred and fifty feet, and be a total of seven thousand eight hundred and forty-five square feet. Proposed lot B will also have fifty-two feet of frontage and a depth of a hundred and fifty feet, but will be a total of seven thousand six hundred and seventy-five square feet. Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals has approved the request for variances in this case. For lot A, you had subdivision of lot, front width from and on street line to front setback line, and constructed dwelling with the garage. For lot B, you had subdivision of lot, front width from and on street line to front setback line, and constructed dwelling with the garage, and demolished the existing dwelling. Uh, while the Town of Hempstead Residence A zoning district requires sixty feet of frontage, the fifty-two feet proposed here would not be considered an extreme departure from that zoning code. There are three properties within two hundred feet of the subject property that have street frontages of only fifty feet. Additionally, the proposed lots are well above the requirements for area in the Residence A zoning district, which requires six thousand square feet. Uh, here today representing the applicant, we have Christian Brown.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. Christian Brown, McLaughlin and Stern, eleven twenty-two Franklin Avenue. For the applicant, the application has been adequately covered. As usual, these are oversized lots that exceed the lot area requirements. They needed relatively minor variances each lot from the, just from the frontage requirement. The houses themselves are zoning compliant. Town granted those variances, and so we're here just seeking to finalize the process. These will be two new homes with garages and parking pads, single-family, all the usual conditions that the town imposes were imposed here to ensure that they remain single-family homes with no basement entrances and so forth, which the Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals imposes on every, every time there's an approved subdivision. So, unless you have questions, that's, that's our application.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? I have nobody, for the first time, of a Chris Brown case signed up to speak, but let's see. Is anyone in the audience? Two other attorneys took your place. I'm bringing out the crowd today. You lose your title.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to lose it.
Okay, we'll make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve NCPC file number eight, I'm sorry, wrong number, twenty-one dash twenty-three with a negative declaration. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried.
All right, have a good day. Thank you.
Next case.
Uh, next up is NCPC file twenty-two of twenty twenty-three. It's an application for a lot line adjustment at ninety-one and five sixty-five Commercial Avenue in the Incorporated Village of Garden City, and also within the unincorporated area of Uniondale, Town of Hempstead. Uh, the thirty-four thousand square foot area subject property situated on the north side of Commercial Avenue, part of which is in Incorporated Village of Garden City's zoning district, which is a special commercial, and part of which is in the hamlet of Uniondale in the Town of Hempstead's industrial zoning district. The application proposes to convey five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five square feet from the western portion of parcel B to the eastern portion of parcel A by means of a lot line adjustment. The area to be conveyed is an existing asphalt parking lot that is already being utilized by occupants of the building on parcel A. After the conveyance, proposed parcel A would have two hundred and five feet of frontage on Commercial Avenue and a depth of eighty-three feet, and be a total of seventeen thousand fifteen square feet, and proposed parcel B would be mimic those exact dimensions as well. The Town of Hempstead Department of Buildings has issued a letter electing to waive their jurisdiction to the Incorporated Village of Garden City, and in turn, the Incorporated Village of Garden City Department of Buildings has issued a letter stating that the Village Planning Commission approval is not required for the proposed lot line adjustment, and that the village has no objections to the proposal. Uh, here today representing the applicant, we have Craig Biscone.
Good morning. Mr. Hossel just took seventy-five percent of my presentation away, which I appreciate. Very simple matter with a long road to get here between the Town of Hempstead and the Village of Garden City. We're adjusting the lot line, or seeking to adjust the lot line between the former MTA police lot, which is vacant, and the adjacent building, which is substantially in the Village of Garden City. The hurdles that we reached were, at the Town of Hempstead, something that took three days in two thousand and seven to get a waiver of jurisdiction to Garden City, took about a year, and in Garden City Village. I happen to sit on that planning commission, so I'm very happy we had no jurisdiction. The superintendent of buildings had to go to each department head to get a sign off, which caused another nine months. So, I expected to be here in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one instead of twenty twenty-three.
You wouldn't have been here, you would have been on Zoom.
On Zoom, this is correct. So, seven A is number ninety-one Commercial Avenue, where there's a building. Seven B is that vacant lot. That vacant lot extends seventy feet of frontage to the east, cutting into the Village of Garden City of that fence. And we're just looking to correct that lot line very, very straightforward. Again, Mr. Hossel really hit all the salient points. Again, Mr. Hossel really hit all the salient points.
Okay, so.
Yes.
I only have one comment.
Yes.
I look at it every time I go there to go to my favorite restaurant, Giulio and Cesare, and I don't go on the parkway. It's a tremendous eyesore. I hope you clean it up. And the MTA has let it go into state disrepair and became a dump.
Yeah, the, the MTA lot is the one you're referring to, correct?
Yeah.
Not the one improved by the building?
Yes.
Yes, we will mention that to the owner because I think he has plans to improve it once we correct.
Anything is an improvement over the way they allowed it to go. Thank you.
Well taken.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have no one signed up from the public. Anyone in the public like to speak? Not hearing or seeing anybody, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve NCPC File Twenty-Two dash twenty-twenty-three with a negative declaration. I'll second.
Motion made in second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, NCPC File Twenty-Three of twenty-twenty-three, application for a two-lot subdivision, twenty-nine Arley Road, mailing address of Great Neck, but actually within the Incorporated Village of Kensington, and within three hundred feet of the unincorporated area of Great Neck Gardens, the village's residential A zoning district. This is a twenty-two thousand square foot area subject property, situated on the north side of Arley Road. The village's residential A zoning district calls for a hundred feet of frontage and eight thousand square feet. This application proposes to subdivide the property, which has two hundred feet of frontage into two equal parcels. Both lot A and lot B will have a hundred feet of frontage and a depth of a hundred and ten feet, and be a total of eleven thousand square feet, thereby meeting the village's zoning code. Incorporated Village of Kensington Board of Trustees granted preliminary subdivision approval at their November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two hearing. After all the conditions of the preliminary resolution were satisfied, Incorporated Village of Kensington Planning Board granting, granted final subdivision approval at their February fifteenth hearing of this year. Conditions of their final approval include obtaining subdivision approval from the Nassau County Planning Commission, and recording two deeds in the county clerk's office within one year. Here today, representing the applicant, we have Michael Son of Son Ward.
Good morning, Commissioners, on behalf of, my name is Joshua Brookstein.
I, I didn't think you looked like Michael Son, I.
No.
I, I didn't even have to put on my other glasses.
Joshua Brookstein from Son Ward, Braff, Colglands, located at three-three-three Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite six oh one in Uniondale. Here today, on behalf of the applicant, Kensington Developers Group LLC, which are the fee owners of the, of the subject property. As was noted briefly before, the subject property is located at twenty-nine Arley Road in the Village of Kensington, also known as Section Two, Block four twenty, Lot sixty-one through seventy on the Nassau County Land and Tax Map. The villages, the subject property is located within the village's A zoning district. The lot is oversized, it's twenty-two thousand square feet, and is currently approved a two-story, single-family dwelling. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing dwelling, subdivide the property, and build two contemporary, single-file home, single-family homes that will be completely zoning compliant. As was stated earlier, on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Board of Trustees granted preliminary subdivision approval, and on February fifteenth, twenty-thirteen to twenty-twenty-three, the village unanimously granted final subdivision approval. With that, happy to take any questions that the commission may have, but respectfully request.
Any questions? The Newsday article explained what a Tony, to use the word, Village Kensington is, so if they approve, it's good enough for us. Oh, anyone in the public like to speak? We have two speakers, this is, now twenty-three, we have nobody scheduled to speak on this case. Not seeing or hearing anyone, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve NCPC Minor Subdivision File Twenty-three, twenty-three with a negative declaration. I'll second.
Motion made in second, are all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried.
Thank you very much.
Tell Michael you're not even a body double.
All right, next up, NCPC File Twenty-Four of twenty-twenty-three, application for a lot line adjustment between the properties at twenty-five and twenty-nine Franklin Avenue, hamlet of North Lynbrook, Town of Hempstead, Residential B Zoning District. This is a thirty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven square foot area subject property, situated on the west side of Franklin Avenue. Application proposes to convey three hundred and eleven square feet from the northern portion of parcel A, which was previously twenty-four thousand five hundred square feet, to the southern portion of parcel, parcel B, which was previously thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-six square feet, by means of a lot line adjustment. The area to be conveyed already has an existing fence marking this proposed property line, as this is essentially a correction to the incorrect property line that currently exists in the county's tax records. Proposed parcel A will be twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-nine square feet after the conveyance, and proposed parcel B will be fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-seven square feet. Town of Hempstead Department of Buildings issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed lot line adjustment, and the application is considered as of right. This property is also located within three hundred feet of the Incorporated Village of Malvern, and as such, their building department has issued a waiver in association with this proposed lot line adjustment. Here today, representing the applicants, we have Lee Kirsch.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Lee Kirsch, thirty-three Rogers Drive, Cold Spring Harbor. As Mr. Hossel has laid it out, it's just a simple lot line adjustment. I don't know if there's any questions.
Well, we'll see in a minute, I have two people signed up on this case. Any questions for the commissioners? Not seeing or hearing anyone now. We have William Nicoletti. I'm sorry if I can't read your writing.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions, I got more questions, I guess, than, than anything else. The lot line adjustment appears to have been asked for after the fact. There seems to be some construction already going on within that lot area, that three hundred square feet. We have pictures of it, and my concern is, what are they going to do with the extra property that they are now going to move to an area that, again, construction appears to have already started?
Okay, sir.
Yes.
If you can yield, Mike, well, do you, do you have a building permit?
There's an existing garage there.
Well, what construction are you doing?
There's no construction going on, the garage is already there. It's been there.
Well, the neighbor said you're doing construction.
I don't see any construction going on.
We have pictures. Behind the garage is a cement foundation that has, looks like it has already been laid and is being covered up by a tarp. My other neighbor here has the pictures and can be a little bit more articulate.
Okay, we'll call him next, okay, thank you.
I'm not aware of this, that's, I, I haven't seen that, I never went behind that.
Are you, what?
I'm not the homeowner, I just filed the application for them.
Are you a lawyer?
No.
So what is your?
I'm the advocate. I'm, I'm doing the service for them.
That's your standing? Is the owner here?
No.
Well, we normally like the owner to come because you have a question like this.
I, I didn't really think there'd be any question, I thought it was just a simple lot line adjustment, so. Yeah.
And you, do you, and you don't even know if they have a building permit?
Chair, I, I would suggest at this point, because I see where the questions are going, and I know the hour is running late.
I would like to adjourn it.
I would, I would say we can do it either the twentieth, because we only have one other matter on the twentieth, or we, we can do it on the twenty-seventh, whatever the preference of the, the applicant is.
Let's do it as a twenty-seventh, we wanna, and that gives time, and make sure the owner of the property.
I'll find out what's going on and have the property owner come in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that agreeable to you, the neighbor, are you available the twenty-seventh? You, you come up to the mic, so the, so I, you signed up to speak, don't take the whole three minutes.
And, and just also know, if you can't make it, you can submit your comments online and they will be read into the record and the board will consider them too.
Or you could make your comments now.
Okay. My name is Brian Monahan, I'm a resident in the area, and I assure you, I'll tie this together. We are very unique in that we're surrounded by Malvern and the Incorporated Village of Lynbrook.
I'm familiar with it.
We're in North Lynbrook, it's the unincorporated Town of Hempstead, which has a, a parking overnight ordinance that Lynbrook and Malvern do not. So we already have a parking issue that's a constant conversation with the Nassau County Police Department and the Town of Hempstead Building Department. Signs keep going up around the neighborhood to make no parking overnight, midnight to six AM. That aside, we have two other properties on Franklin Avenue that have decided to use the residential properties as commercial properties. One has a legitimate commercial business, an irrigation company. The other is renting it out as Sleeps Twenty-four Bed and Breakfast Overnight, which brings me to the property at twenty-nine. Twenty-nine has already started the construction of extending the garage in the back, it's listed as a framed garage. It has three independent roof vents in that roof. That would imply or indicate there might be something different in the garage than a garage. You don't usually have three independent vents on the roof. I believe that those are probably bathroom vents, I don't know that for a fact. I would ask the Town of Hempstead Building Department to investigate this property and determine if, in fact, they're building a second bed and breakfast in our neighborhood. Because we have weekends now where we get the entertainment provided by our neighbors, where they have wild parties because they've rented it for bed and breakfast for the weekend, and it doesn't stop unless the police come or they get to the end of the weekend. It's become a real nuisance, we've contacted Bill Galor, a legislator, we've contacted the building department numerous times, the county police, and it, everybody promises they're gonna do something.
So, so you have a brand-new Town of Hempstead Councilwoman, Laura Ryder.
She's been written to.
Okay, you, you may want to call her also.
I, I will.
She'll be very responsive, because she's new and she's on the ballot this year, and she comes out of a village trustee in the Village of Lynbrook, so she understands this. If you recognize the last name.
Right.
Brother-in-law is the police commissioner.
I, I do, and they, we've also been, Anthony Di Esposito has been involved, there's been a number of political people.
We have bigger issues for Anthony to work on in Washington D.C.
Well, he's moved on to a very good place and we're happy for him, but we are.
Call the Town of Hempstead, like you said, it's not our jurisdiction, and come to the next meeting with some answers.
I will try my best to make that date, you said it would be April twenty-seventh? I, I also would like to submit.
April twenty-seventh, ten AM.
Ten AM, April twenty-seventh, and I'd also like to submit that the survey provided doesn't show the concrete slab behind that garage, so as far as I'm concerned, the paperwork for this application are incomplete or.
We, we will ask staff to revisit it, staff before the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, sir.
And the vice chair will also visit.
Thank you, board, thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to April twenty-seventh, not seeing or hearing anyone wanting to sign up to speak.
Motion to adjourn, NCPC Subdivision File Twenty-four dash twenty-three on neg deck. No, I'm sorry, to postpone the hearing to April twenty-seventh.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kirsch? Mr. Kirsch, you walked out, we're not done. I wanted to tell you that it's disrespectful to walk out while we're still talking about your case. And number two, tell your owner that you represent, it's disrespectful to this commission not to come here and to answer questions, legitimate questions of the good neighbors, and he better come to the next meeting prepared to answer that, or we'll postpone again. Okay, so you're not done till we vote? And, and please ask him to come to the next meeting, and if he's not at the next meeting, we'll postpone again. Okay, thank you. Okay, next case. Thank you, guys, you can leave now.
Next is NCPC File Twenty-Five of twenty-twenty-three. This is an application for a two-lot subdivision at one sixty Robbins Lane, hamlet of Jericho, Town of Oyster Bay, R-one-ten zoning district. This is a twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-one square foot area subject property, situated on the south side of Robbins Lane. Application proposes to subdivide the property, which has two hundred and seven feet of frontage on Robbins, into two separate parcel. Proposed lot A will have a hundred and eleven feet of frontage on Robbins Lane, depth of a hundred and thirty-two feet, be a total of twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Proposed lot B will have ninety-six feet of frontage on Robbins Lane, depth of a hundred and twenty-eight feet, total of twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-two square feet. Town of Oyster Bay Department of Planning and Development has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision, and the application is considered as of right. And speaking with the applicant, he has provided this sketch of the proposed homes and proposed driveway and garage at both properties. This will allow for the off-street parking of up to three vehicles at each of the sites, as on-street parking near the subject property on Robbins can be difficult because of the elementary school across the street on Robbins Lane. Here today is the property owner and applicant, Mariam Nawabi.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Mariam Nawabi, thirty-four Pine Road, Sayaset, New York. I bought this property because it meets all the requirements and I'm willing to build a house for myself and my daughter.
Okay, any questions from the commissioners? You're a builder, you're gonna build it?
No, I'm not, my brother is the builder.
Oh, okay, okay. Anyone in the public, no one has signed up, anyone in the public like to speak on this case? Not hearing or seeing anyone, let's entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve NCPC Minor Subdivision File Twenty-five dash twenty-three with neg deck.
Second.
Motion made in second, are all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None, so carried. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
Next case, forty-three dash twenty. And then after that case, we're gonna go back on the record for the case that we sent outside with respect to the release of bond, and then we're gonna go to the zoning calendar.
All right, last up in minor subdivisions, this is NCPC File Forty-three of twenty-twenty, an application for a lot line adjustment at eighteen eighty-three Lincoln Avenue and one ninety-seven East Meadow Avenue, hamlet of East Meadow, Town of Hempstead, Residential B Zoning District. That's the East Meadow Fire Department and a residence on Lincoln Avenue. Essentially, you know, you probably may remember this application from when it was approved back in twenty-twenty. They're, they're, they had two extensions at a time, those have both expired, and now they're back again for another approval. I won't steal too much of the thunder, but except, essentially, they created a landlocked parcel, if you go to the survey real quick, so they, they have to correct this, this issue with the tax assessor in order to file the deeds. But here today, representing the applicants, is Simone Freeman.
Good morning, Chairman, Members, Simone Freeman, Jasmine Flessinger-Nurandarin, three-hundred Garden City Plaza, fifth floor, Garden City, New York. So as Mr. Hossel mentioned, this application was approved in, originally approved in twenty-twenty. It is a minor lot line adjustment of approximately twenty-one, twenty-five square, twenty-one, two thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet, which is going to enable the East Meadow Fire District to expand its property and have more room for its facilities. We, as I said, were approved, had a hearing in twenty-twenty, were approved. We then put together the process for the closing and, and all of those deeds and documents. We did go in, we met with the county, Arthur Nestry was, was very helpful, and we did process everything with the clerk. However, when it went to go to be recorded for purposes of lots with the tax assessor, the tax assessor notified the clerk that because it would essentially be creating a landlocked parcel, unless the fire district also incorporates that parcel, and we file a separate, basically, we do a closing from the fire district to the fire district and make a new parcel, they would not be able to record any of the deeds and we'd have to be able to do that. So when we had gotten this feedback, it was the end of November, a new survey had to be made, we had to get a new meets and bounds for the new property, and that just took some time, and by that, I'm sorry, is there a question?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. And by that point, exactly, by that point, you know, it was our, our, our extension had expired and it was over the two extensions, so we had to come back, and the county attorney's office did suggest we do it this way, and I, everyone has been very accommodating and we do appreciate that with us not having to go through the entire filing process again. we do appreciate that with us not having to go through the entire filing process again.
I think we'll continue to be accommodating.
Thank you.
But I can't guarantee that till after we vote.
Yes.
Okay, any questions from any of the commissioners? We've heard this sack of before. Okay, usually the reverse, it's usually the clerk that objects, not the assessor.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve.
Anyone, I have no one signed up, anyone in the public like to speak? Not hearing or seeing anyone, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve and classify as type 2 according under SEQA.
We have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So carry. Okay.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our calendar. We'll go back now on the record for the release of bond on NCPC File 1983-F-1, map of Marina Point at East Rockaway.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Bezuli present? Okay.
Will they both be given a chance to speak?
No, you had your chance, you had your three minutes. Mr. Bezuli, did you meet with the resident of the property to review the pictures?
Yes, I did, sir, and he showed me a picture of a sidewalk entrance outside one of the buildings of the project where the pavement was raised. It's hard to judge from the picture, but suffice it to say that we will fix that sidewalk, and I would suggest to the commission a fair resolution today would be to, would be to release the bond and hold the cash escrow, I believe it's over $40,000. This is a minor repair item, you'll have more than enough money on account to assure the public that their concerns are being met.
Mr. Devo has a comment.
Okay, I spoke with John O'Doherty through texts, and he did some investigation on his own, and he did find that there is one flag of sidewalk that is a minor settling. It's not, it's not a difficult fix, and he also recommended the same thing, is to hold the escrow, and he will make sure that it's completed as it should be, and then at that point, we would continue on.
Thank you, sir.
But to release the bond would be appropriate in this case.
And for the record, we have done this in the past on other projects for other people, and the 40,000, like you said, is more than enough to cover the replacement of the flag and the repairs. The, the other thing is that you will be required to come back here for another hearing so that the neighbor resident will know for the release of the 40,000.
That's fine.
Okay, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion on that subject. Do we have a motion? Okay.
I make a motion to release. I just got to find it, hang on.
You're finding, give them the amount of the bond.
NCPC File 1983-F-1, the release of the bond.
In the amount of, the amount of 1 million, do you have it in front of you?
I don't have that.
Okay, 1,467,678.33, and the motion also will state that we are retaining the cash escrow in the amount of 47,453.97, which will be subject to a separate hearing for the release of that. Do we have a second? Motion, motion seconded. Motion made in second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So carry. Okay, thank you very much.
And thank you for your patience.
I think it's a fair resolution, sorry to make you wait.
And just one last thing to both sides, you know, when Mr. O'Doherty goes back, he does not meet with people. He does an independent inspection without being influenced by either side or any side. So, he will do it objectively, and he'll report back to the commission if and when you make an application for the release of the escrow.
And also, the other thing, no, sir, sir, we have a stenographer here, you cannot shout out at a public meeting. You will not go to the mic again, we're late, we're going to lose the quorum at 12, we have other business to do. You had your statutory three minutes in accordance with our rules of regulations. And anything further, you can address the staff. Mr. Bezuli, just please notify staff when the repairs are completed so Mr. O'Doherty can inspect. Thank you very much, everybody. Next item on the calendar is the zoning calendar. On the zoning calendar, we're going to do the Freeport cases first, and Commissioner's going to step out as he always does. Commissioner Elaby is recused. Do the three Freeport cases.
Okay.
Four, busy.
We have four Freeport cases, all, I think all local determination except for one, so...
There's one we're supposed to come to the pre-meeting. What, is that the one that's not local determination?
No, that, no, that one would have been, that's item number six, that's the Moxie Rigby Gate. That's, I think, the village, and everybody's in support of that. The one in which we're requesting additional information on is number, is item number nine. Okay, so...
Do that one first.
Okay.
Please.
Sure. This is NC, NCPC Case Number 316123, this is within the village of Freeport. It's inclusion in the Golden Age District, overlay district, and also a future subdivision or concurrent subdivision. The applicant proposes to construct a five-story, 80-unit building on a 30,180 square foot parcel. Yeah, the totals, actually, the total size of the parcel is 42,000 square feet, the church, the residential parcel to be created will be about 30,000 square feet, okay? The entire property is currently occupied by a church with a large open area. The church will be maintained in a lesser parcel comprising approximately 12,700 square feet. The project will be built on a large open area that is presumably used by the church for parking and maybe other events. It's partially paved, partially not. The applicant intends to include the proposed residential portion of the property in the Golden Age District, which is an, which provides affordable, an affordable housing opportunity for senior citizens. The project will require a subdivision to split the proposed apartment building property from the remaining church property. The proposed residential project is parking compliant. Proposed apartment building will be four stories of units over enclosed surface parking and miscellaneous building support services. There will also be below-grade parking. Access to the site will be via a curb cut on Broadway. According to the project's attorney, the church will access, will have access to tent parking spaces from the new residential project. Broadway is two lanes with parking on the north side of the street. To the east and south are dwellings, to the north across Broadway is a small warehouse and two-story storefronts, which are called taxpayers. To the west is a two-story storefront also referred to as a taxpayer. Staff is recommending additional information. Information on the size of the church congregation and required parking is requested, as such information has not been provided. Also, parking analysis is requested, is requested, that considers the church parking needs as a new multifamily residential parcel is using an area that is and will be, that was and currently is presumably used for church parking. So, we don't have enough information now, in my opinion.
Okay, what's the opinion of the staff? Do you want to mark it incomplete, and then they have to come back at the next meeting on the 27th?
Well, that's assuming they have, they give us what we want.
So, well, but we...
I'll put it on if they give us that.
Right, right. So, that's what we're going to make a motion to mark it incomplete. Can we entertain a motion to that effect as per the staff recommendation?
I'll make a motion, zoning referral, NCPC Case Number 316123. We're going to wait for more information, and if available, we will bring it to April 27th hearing.
Do we have a second? Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, now I'll do case number four, which is also Freeport. This is NCPC Case File 32323. This is for use variance, height variance, area dimensional variances. This is in the Business B Zoning District. This is a proposed, a four-story apartment building with nine units in that grade parking beneath the second floor on a 6,600 square foot site, three-two-bedroom and six-one-bedroom apartment units proposed. Several variances required, including the use variance, as an apartment building is not permitted in the Business B District. Lot area, minor height variance, or height variance, insufficient open space recreational area, which is a part of all these apartment buildings. Parking in the front yard not permitted, insufficient front yard setback. The site is currently vacant. To the west is a, is a three-story apartment building, to the north across Broadway are detached dwellings. To the east is a dwelling and a two-story taxpayer-type property. That's a ground floor commercial, second floor either residential or stored space. To the south is a one-story warehouse building. There is a five-story apartment building to the northwest of the subject property across Broadway. Broadway is two lanes with on-street parking along the north side. While several variances are being requested, residential infill in this vacant lot would actually, in my opinion, be an improvement along this stretch of Broadway and add some needed activity and vitality. Staff is recommending a local determination.
Okay, any questions on that case? We'll entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion.
For LD?
Yeah, local determination, but I'm just looking for the number on it. Thirty, what was it, four, I'm sorry, 32, 32, three.
Okay.
As an LD.
Okay, do we have a second? Motion made in second, are all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Okay, next Freeport.
Yeah, this is item number six. This is a Freeport also, and this is for a change of zone and inclusion in the Golden Age District. Change of, change of zone from industrial B to residential apartment district and classify a portion of the site to the Golden Age Floating Zone to redevelop and/or rehabilitate the existing 3.5-story apartment building for 200 units of, of affordable housing. It is a site, it is a site of the, what was known as, or maybe still is known as, the Moxie Rigby Apartment Community that is now vacant. 50% of the units will be workforce housing, which is affordable, 25% will be Golden Age housing, which is also affordable, and 25% will be veterans' housing. The northeasterly portion of the subject property is developed with multi-story, with a multi-story vacant warehouse structure that will be incorporated into the project and redeveloped with a four-story apartment building to be incorporated into the renovated Moxie Rigby, the former Moxie Rigby Apartment Complex. To the north are ball fields. To the south, across Merrick Road, 7-Eleven and law offices. To the east, across Albany Avenue, are BMW service facility, a gas station, and the Freeport School Grounds Building. To the west, across Buffalo Avenue, is a mattress store and a warehouse and auto repair shop and a shopping center that includes a Target. Staff is recommending local determination. I do have a little blurb to read into the record that the mayor requested that...
Yes. I have it, if not. You want me to read it? Yes. Okay, so, the villi, first off, okay, the village attorney supplied this to me, sent it tomorrow. "The developer wishes to rehabilitate the existing buildings and will build one additional building to accommodate parking and other amenities. The village has inspected the existing buildings and does not see any problems with this sort of development. The buildings all meet or exceed FEMA height requirements and are structurally sound and would provide a good base to build upon. The developer is able to provide 150 to 175 parking spots, which will minimize parking in part to the local area, and the project is walkable to a shopping center with Target, grocery store, Five Below, Marshall's, Burlington Coat Factory, Bob's Furniture, Sketches, et cetera." The project is a, is the Moxie Rib, project, Moxie Rigby parcel.
I also have something a little added, a little paragraph.
Yeah, fine, fine.
That the mayor, quote, quote-unquote, this is from Mayor Kennedy, "Redevelopment of the old Moxie Rigby property will allow our children, seniors, and veterans the opportunity to stay in Freeport and on Long Island, as well as providing, providing needed construction jobs and tax relief for our residents on a property that hasn't generated property taxes since 1957."
Eighty-seven.
What's that?
Eighty.
Oh, this is fifty-seven.
Oh, fifty-seven, because it was off, right, taxes.
And the redevelopment is why community support and the board supports the project 100% Mayor Robert Kennedy, T. Kennedy.
Okay, and at the pre-meeting, the representatives of developers were supposed to come to the pre-meeting. And we normally don't let them speak here, and we're going to lose our quorum at 12 o'clock, and we have more cases to do. So, I explained it, that this has been vacant since Sandy. It was washed down and destroyed and unhappenedable since Sandy. So, unless any commissioners have any questions, we can, okay, any questions for anybody? The only question, just explain one thing, there's another parcel building that, that you bought in addition to Moxie Rigby. What are you doing with that? Just, that's the one question we had in the pre-meeting.
I'm sorry.
Your name, your name and address for the record.
Marco Silva, S.I.L.V.A. from Harris Beach, 333 Earl Living, O'Gorman Boulevard, Suite 901 in Union Dell. Good morning, still. I'm not sure which property you're talking about as a separate application.
The warehouse building, that square building that you bought next to it?
I represent the applicant, I'm not the applicant, so I don't know about any separate building, if, unless it was for parking or something.
Well, it looks like it's parking, according to the plan.
Oh, is that, or it's going to be taken?
It looks like it's a parking lot according to their plans.
Oh, my colleague.
Yes.
Good morning, Al Loquello, also with Harris Beach. It's going to be proposed parking.
Yeah, so you're going to tear it down for parking?
Actually, they're thinking of doing the parking within the building, so it won't be blighted.
Okay, fine, so you're going to rehabilitate that building, thank you.
So, it's 177 total spots to correct the earlier statement.
Okay.
Some of those are intended, I guess, to be in that building, that is the stacked parking.
Oh, okay, now that's what we needed for the record. Okay, I'm sorry you couldn't make it early, and I'm sorry, we're running late, and we're going to lose the quorum.
Apologies.
Okay. There's one other person in the audience, we don't normally allow speakers, but...
I'm just listening.
Just, good, good, we like listeners, yes, better than speakers. Okay, we'll entertain a motion on this case at this time.
I'll make a motion to NCPC Case 313123.
313123?
Oh, it's a good number.
313123 for local determination.
Okay, motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's all of Freeport?
No, there's one more.
What more?
That's item number 11.
Okay. Okay, fine. Okay. Hopefully, we'll be gone in 10 minutes, Denise.
Item number 11 is NCPC Case 32423, Village of Freeport, this is for a parking variance. This is the conversion of a vacant commercial space, it's two vacant storefronts or offices, what might have been offices, as part of, that's part of a small commercial strip to house a church. Insufficient parking, it seems very significant, but with five spaces provided that exist, 115 required based on a seating capacity of 345, so it's, it's a very burdensome parking requirement. To the north are dwellings, to the south are storefronts, to the west, across Guyland Barlow Avenue is a Boston Market, to the east are homes. Guyland Barlow Avenue consists of two parking lanes and parking on both sides, there's also parking permitted along Atlantic Avenue. Staff is recommending a local determination that there's plenty of on-street parking along the commercial arterials in off, off-peak times, I would think, so...
Okay, let's have a motion on this case, and then we'll move on to the others. Okay, someone, motion on this one case for LD?
I make a motion, NCPC 32423, an LD.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, are all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So carry. Okay.
Okay, let me get to the other ones.
Send, send out, okay. All right, do, do all the other LD short form as... All right, do, do all the other LDs short form as a group.
Well, actually...
There's not many left.
You want me to go through all the LDs or just the ones that we have other than LDs?
There's only one left. The fourteen is a denial, right, you recommend?
Yeah, I have, I have...
Just do fourteen alone.
Okay, let me start with case number two, which is a modification, okay?
Oh, that's a modification, yes, okay.
This is, this is NCPC case number three-two-one-two-three. This is town of Hempstead, Hamlet, Uniondale. It's for special exception, area dimensional variances, parking variances. This is a proposed strip commercial center of about eight thousand square feet that includes a fairly large laundromat and three storefronts on a twenty-two-thousand-acre site. The site is occupied by a vacant bank, bank building, what appears to be a vacant bank building that will be demolished. The proposed, the proposed building has no rear yard setback with ten feet required, insufficient front yard setback on Lennox and Fenimore Avenues. Also insufficient parking stall size and a parking variance with forty-eight spaces are required, forty provided. Also special exception to parking front yard setbacks. The two existing curb cuts on Lennox and Fenimore Avenue will be closed and relocated on both side streets and not, with no vehicular access on Front Street, which is a state road. To the west is a small food store across Lennox Avenue. To the north are homes that abut the property. To the south, across Front Street, is a commercial strip. To the east, across Fenimore Avenue, is a Domino's Pizza, Pizza. Front Street is two lanes with on-street parking. Staff is recommending modification. The current plan has the building, the proposed building budding up against the rear property line with no setback at all, and this abuts residential properties. This is an impact, as far as I'm concerned, on the residential properties to the north, particularly from the laundromat. Also, this layout does not allow for rear property building access, as it butts up against the property line. Consideration should be given to reducing the building footprint and relocating the, relocating the proposed building to the front of the site along Front Street, parking to the rear of the building.
I make a motion, NCPC thirty-two, one, not one-two-three, what, what do we have? Yeah, one-two-three, I'm sorry, one-two-three, that we deny it.
Modify.
Modify.
Yeah. They're trying to modify.
Right. That we would...
Any opposed? So carried.
Now, item number ten, which we discussed in Bayville, staff had a different recommendation at that time, but the, the applicant, I think the commission has gone to maybe recommend local determination.
Yes, we want that local determination.
So should we read it or not, at this point, not even...
No, no, put, just speed dial.
Okay.
All, all the local determinations that are left. The members have to leave, I promised them twelve. The clock's wrong.
Well, this one was a proposed relapse, as a proposed relapse.
Read, read all the numbers of the cases that are left.
Yeah, this is a case number ten, NCPC case number three-sixteen-two-two-three, Village of Bayville. This is for a, for, actually, for area slash dimensional variances, which is an on-year staff summary, and it's in a residential district. Proposed relapse subdivision on twenty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five square-foot property. Proposed lot one has a frontage of fifty feet, thirty-six inches, and a lot area of ninety, nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three square feet. Proposed lot two has a frontage of nine, thirty-nine, almost forty feet, and a lot area of almost ninety-six hundred square feet. Proposed lot three is a frontage of forty-five feet and a lot area of nine thousand one hundred and eleven square feet. Residential F zoning district requires a minimum lot frontage of a hundred and fifty feet and a minimum lot area of forty thousand square feet. The site is currently vacant.
Read, read.
To the north is the Long Island Sound. To the east are homes. To the south, across Bayville Avenue, is a small commercial strip. To the west is vacant land that was formerly the site of Sea Pier One Restaurant. Bayville Avenue is two... Okay, in any case, staff is recommending local determination. Yeah. I'm just gonna go, right now, I'm just gonna go to the one... Yeah, okay. I'm gonna go to item, item number fourteen, I think, which is other than a local determination, okay? So I won't even read the local, yeah. Okay. Item number one, NCPC case number twelve-five-one-twenty-three, Town of North Hempstead, Hamlet, Westbury, or Newcastle. That's for special use. Proposed construction of a thirty-five thousand square-foot warehouse fulfillment center, they call it, on a point-five-seven-acre site. It's in the old Hev... You want me just to read the case number or the staff summary? Just the case number, that, okay. Okay. The next one, item number three, NCPC case number three-two-two-two-three, Town of Voice Bay, Sayoset. Special use and revocation of restrictive covenants. So I read that, so... Next, next is Greenville. This is NCPC case number three-three-one-two-three, Town of North Hempstead, Hamlet, Greenville. Conditionally used area, dimensional variances, sign variances for a proposed starbucks. Next one, NCPC case number three-one-three-two-two-three, Town of Voice Bay, Hicksville. This is for a site plan review for the proposed warehouse of approximately two hundred thousand square feet on fifteen-acre former Superfund site that we, that's gonna be built on spec, and staff recommends local determination. This was discussed at the pre-meeting in detail. NCPC case number two-nine-three-two-three, City of Glencov. This is a, for a, this is site plan review, special use and a couple of variances for a three-story, twenty-nine-unit multifamily building. This also was discussed at the pre-meeting. It's the third time the commission is hearing it, and staff has recommended local determination. Okay, we, okay, next one, this is in the Village of Lindbrook, NCPC case number three-twenty-one-two-three. This is a, an amendment to the zoning code that will include transit dwelling units as a prohibited use in all zoning districts within the village. Staff is recommending local determination. And the final local determination is NCPC case number two-fifteen-two-two-three. This is the Village of Seaf, Seaf Cliff, and it's for a moratorium. And suppose, it's a proposed six-month moratorium on subdivisions with the option to extend moratorium for three, three-month periods. This also was represented and discussed at the meeting with the council to the village, discussing the actual, the need for this moratorium at this point in time. Okay, so that's, that's it for the LDs.
Can I say the numbers?
Yes, just say the numbers.
Okay. Motion to put number one, three, five, seven, eight, Bayville is included.
Yeah.
Number ten, number twelve, and thirteen for local determination.
Do we have a second? Motion made in second.
Aye.
We have one more case, fourteen. I'm sorry. Okay, well, this one, yeah, this one I'll read, this is a short... Okay. This is NCPC case number three-two-two-one-two-three, Village of New Hyde Park. It's, it's for the expansion of a non-conforming residential use, and it will require parking variance. This is a proposed two-story expansion with four additional units to an existing non-conforming four-family dwelling for a total of eight units on a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lot. The subject property is surrounded by single-family homes in all directions except the north, which is, which, across First Avenue, there is a vacant parochial elementary school. Parking variance is required with sixteen units, sixteen spaces required, nine spaces provided. Also, the expansion of a non-conforming residential use is not, is not permitted unless change is to, unless the change is to a conforming use or a special permit is granted by the Board of Trustees. The staff recommendation is to deny this, as the character of the neighborhood is one of single-family dwellings. Doubling the size of the non-conforming four-family dwelling to an eight-family, eight-family dwelling is out of character with the neighborhood, and in staff's opinion is unwarranted. I know Commissioner Sack, which is very familiar with this site, he, he might have something to say on this, or as might other commissioners.
Yeah, just, this is a, an eyesore of the community for a while. The village board, mayor have been after this resident for, since he's purchased it probably two, three years ago. They are one-hundred percent supportive of it and would like to see it happen. They've kind of designed it with them to kind of fit in the neighborhood, to look like a single-family home, peaks and roofs and valleys. So I'm gonna make a, a motion on NCPC three-two-two-one-two-three that we, local determination.
We have, we have a motion to make it approve it as local determination. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, are all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So carried. Thank you very much, Nassau County Police, thank you very much. Thank your colleagues that left earlier. We appreciate your attendance here today. We had a little bit of a crowd that we normally don't have.